We are recording.
All right, thank you. Just waiting for my handy dandy phone to go to six o'clock.
We are live on Facebook.
Thank you. And there we have it. All right, welcome everyone to this evening's Swamaco Village Board meeting. This is Monday, August 1st, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. And if possible, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to vote against the agenda tonight because we are disregarding what the Public Works Committee said by voting against item 8A, and it's still on the agenda anyway.
I asked for it to be added.
I'm voting against it.
Okay, that's perfectly all right. Anyone else? Okay, is there, I still am looking for a motion. I have, I have, well, actually, is that a motion? Was that a motion to not approve the agenda?
No, I disapprove it.
So is it a motion?
If you guys want to make, it was not a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Just wanted to check to make sure. So we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Andrews to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Ward. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So motion carries four to one. All right, at this time, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the very greatness of its majesty.
Thank you. Okay. All right, moving along. So at this time, we are moving on to item number five, which is public appearances. At this time, if there's anyone there that would like to out the audience, who'd like to come forward and speak on an issue that's not on the agenda, this would be your time to do so. Please come to the mic, share your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind, but be aware that no action can be taken on these issues this evening if it's not on the agenda. However, it could be referred back to staff. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? All right, thank you. We have no one interested in speaking, moving on.
I guess I can speak?
Is the item on the agenda?
Yes.
We'll get to you.
Yep, you'll have a chance to speak then when we get to your item on the agenda. Okay, thank you. All right, item number six, consent agenda. Previous minutes of the Village Board, 7/18/2022. Item B, Treasurer's Report, June 2022. Item C, Fire Department Report, June 2022. Item D, Updated 2022/2023 Poll Worker List. And item E, Annual Continuing Disclosure Report.
Motion to approve.
Just a second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Eckert to approve this evening's consent agenda, and we have a second from Trustee Romas. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item number seven, item A, Operator's License Denials. Clerk Bartoletti, item one, Kristi C. Liddy, denial recommendation, and item two, Cara M. Mason, denial review. Clerk Bartoletti.
Okay, we did submit for your review the guidelines that we use when we are going through operators licenses. This one did come down from Deputy Jeffrey Bodry, who is present. If you had any questions on what he's prepared as far as the denial recommendation, he can attest to that. Did you have any questions on any of the guidelines or any of the paperwork submitted to you?
I do have a question, actually.
Okay.
It would now be the time to address that with him?
I would, I would say.
Okay, very good. So within the guidelines, Deputy Sheriff, what do the guidelines states?
It's, the question I have is the term habitual refers to convictions or pending charges that could include an offender with two offenses occurring within a relatively short period of time. But there is an extended discussion on here about offenses. And in this case, so when I'm looking at the offenses, I guess I see, oh, sorry, I see the date of offense here, February 23rd, 2021. Is it, do all of these offenses, I'm assuming they do fall within that guideline?
All these offenses also fall under guideline B, or correction, guideline number four, sub B, three or more offenses, each a separate incident within the immediately preceding five years. In addition to that, sub C of guideline number four, six or more offenses, each a separate incident within the preceding 10 years. There was additional incidents that were, I did not count in there. I counted for this purposes of this memo.
Okay.
These offenses with three or more within the five years.
Thank you. So one other question I have with regard to this guidance that you have very nicely summarized here. Where does this guidance come from? Is this Brown County, or is this state, or is this federal?
This is from the village itself, and I believe the Village of Swamaco adopted it from the city of Madison.
So this is village guidance?
Yes, correct. This is through the Village of Swamaco. And then these are guidelines that have been followed through the village.
Do you know how long they've been in place?
Before I was even in this position as a directed enforcement officer.
Okay.
So they have been followed for years.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions for the Deputy Sheriff?
And I believe the applicant is here.
Well, certainly, I can give the applicant a chance to speak. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir. So these are administrative items. This is not a public hearing, but the applicant is listed on here, so I don't believe I need to open the floor for public comment. We can invite the applicant if they would like to come forward and share whatever's on your mind. Just please provide your name and address, just for the record, thank you.
My name's Kristy Leidy, and my address is 2042 Memorial Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54303.
Welcome.
I just want to say, I got this drunk driving in 2015, and it took me a long time to get my license back. All of it is related to the OWI. I did get my license, I did everything I needed to, I took my class. So I complied with everything. It just took a really long time because it was so expensive, and I couldn't get a license for a couple of years because of it, and then COVID and everything else. So I've done everything on my part to get my, get my license valid.
Okay, thank you.
And the bail jumping also is due to that because I had an open court case and I got caught driving. So that's basically what that was.
Okay. Am I allowed to ask what the operator's license application is with, with reference to? Sure. Would you mind sharing that? It's entirely up to you.
Sure, what would you like me to share?
So your operator's license that you're applying for, what type of position is it?
Just to sell liquor at the gas station.
Just to, pardon me?
I work at a gas station.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just part-time, and they want me to get my liquor license for that.
Okay. All right, other questions? Ms. Liddy? Am I pronouncing that right?
It's Leidy.
Leidy, sorry.
Sorry.
Other questions for Ms. Leidy? Anyone? Is there anything else she'd like to share?
That's it.
It's, so it was operating while revoked, bail jumping, how?
Well, basically, so I had an open court case, and I just kept getting tickets, like, they never, like, threatened me with jail. And then the last time that it happened, they, like, arrested me. So that's why all of that happened, because I was driving without a, I didn't have my license yet.
But it was a condition of your?
My bond, and I kept driving.
And you did repeatedly?
Yep.
Since, because you said it's because of that 2015, and you've been violation of that one, two, three, four, five times that you were caught. So I could have pretty much assumed you were driving much more than that.
It was hard, like, I lived out here. There are no Ubers, no taxis, nobody would help, so it was hard.
Other questions? If there are no other questions, we could dismiss Ms. Leidy and then discuss amongst herself? Thank you. So I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to open the discussion on this because as I was reviewing this evening's packet of agenda items, as I mentioned earlier, there was one item which I asked to be put on the agenda. This evening's meeting has an unusual theme running through it, and this is one element of that theme. And we, as a, as a board, did a very good job in the last meeting, I think, addressing an ordinance with regard to horses. And basically, instead of granting that individual, what that individual wanted, we looked at our ordinance and discussed our ordinance and made changes to our ordinance. So I think that this board was very responsible in that circumstance, looking at the ordinance and not giving in to just, we're not addressing one single issue for one single person, because this board's job is, is addressing the issues of the community. And we have ordinances which direct us in that manner, and I think we'll see a number of those instances tonight. And Ms. I, Ms. Leidy, I very much applaud your, your efforts, right? And it certainly sounds like you're on the right track. But I think we have one of these issues here. So if as much as if everything was in the right place and we had the strongest feeling possible and we were to, to, you know, rescind this, you know, not allowing this operator's license, we would basically be going against our guidance that has been in place that many other people have, have, that we've used with many other people. And I think that it's our job as a board, it's our job to all citizens, it's a job to, that we, that we uphold by being elected here to follow our ordinances or decide that our ordinances don't apply and let's change them. So I would, from my position on this particular issue and many other ones this evening, as we'll see, this to me is an issue of, do we need to change our ordinance? Do we need to change our guidance? That's, that's what I'm wrestling with. Thank you. Who else?
Do you recommend approval?
Based upon the guidelines that we are assigned to follow, which I do have an answer in terms of when the village began adopting these guidelines, it started in December of 2009, I'm going to recommend the denial.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
I personally don't see where we need to change any guidelines that we're using right now, so I'm good with the way things are being handled right now.
President Van Rossum, is there a particular area of the ordinance that you're not liking? Is it that it's too old? Is it because it uses for Madison? Is it something involved in it that you just want to have a discussion on it?
No, quite the opposite, actually. I, I think that this is, this is emblematic of a number of other issues. We've had an ordinance, an ordinance or guidance that's been in place for a very long time, as long as I've been here, and it's been effective. And we've gone through many, many consent agendas where there have been denials, and there have been approvals, and all of those have followed the same guidance. So if our decision is to, to, to countermand that guidance at this point, I think that there's a, there's some sort of responsibility, some sort of ownership that we have to all the other people that we denied previously. But if it's the feeling of the board that this particular guidance is some way, in some fashion unfair, then we need to correct it, have that discussion and correct it, so that the next person who comes in the door and wants to, you know, discuss their denial, they know what the rules are of the game. They're not just made up when that person walks through the door. We don't just change it for one individual. So that's my point. I, you know, and again, I applaud, I applaud Ms. Leidy's efforts, and she certainly is moving on the right track. But this is a larger issue than just one person. This is a village issue, this is a guidance issue. And if the board in their esteemed wisdom, as I said, looks at that guidance and says, ma'am, maybe we need to discuss this, that's what I would, I would certainly agree to do that. I don't feel that that's necessary myself, but if the majority of the board felt it was, I would certainly.
I just wanted to see where you're coming from. I, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Are there other comments from the board? None? If there are no other comments or no other discussion, I would look for a motion, please.
Motion to accept the denial for Kristy Leidy's operator license.
So we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Eckert to accept the denial recommendation for Kristy Leidy operator's license. Do I have a second to this motion?
Next.
I have a second from Trustee Schneider. Are there any further comments or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to one. Three, four, what, the five to one, sorry, you just snuck in at the last minute.
Yeah, signed in.
Got my numbers messed up, five to one, thank you. All right, moving on. Here we go. All right. Clerk Bartoletti, we are on item number two, Cara M. Mason, denial review.
And again, we did apply the guidelines to this individual, and I guess the individual is present here this evening. If you wanted to ask any questions of DEO regarding this, or if you had any other questions for me.
Anyone with any questions for our DEO or Clerk Bartoletti?
No other legal issues since 2012?
None.
The denial recommendation was based off of the felony status of each of the five charges, and those go back lifetime. There's no timeframe, five years, 10 years to go back, that's lifetime.
According to the guidance?
According to our guidance.
Trustee Ward, could you swing your mic?
So, and this is, this is the same guidance adopted from the city of Madison, which Swamaco has had on the books?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Just from my understanding, we have, like, for example, I'm guessing the parent F behind forgery, the F would be felony. When, you're saying times five, would that be?
Correct. The possession of narcotics is a felony, the forgery uttering, five counts, each were felonies, the financial transaction card fraud, two counts were felonies. Misappropriate ID to obtain money is a felony. Forgery uttering, party to a crime, three counts were all felonies. There were multiple counts on several of these charges, but they count as one offense then from, for our guidelines.
Okay.
They have to be of separate incidents.
Anyone else? Ms. Mason, if you're in the audience and you'd like to come forward, I certainly would give you the floor. Hello?
Hi, I'm Cara Mason. What's my address?
Welcome.
Yes.
1130 Shepherd's Path in Green Bay. I just want to say that these are all very old crimes from 2015, or 15 years ago and 10 years ago. Completed drug court from Brown County in 2014, and I did it in 13 months. I've been, they all are related to my drug addiction. I have 10 years clean coming in December.
Take your time, take your time.
The fact that I'm being denied this because of felonies that happened so long ago is very disturbing to me. It's troubling. I haven't had any issues since 2012. I haven't had, I haven't used drugs since then. I haven't had any problems getting my license, operator's license, with other municipalities. It's just this one. I've had it in Deep Pier, I've had it in Howard, Ledgeview, and Wrightstown. And this is the only one that's denied me. And I have a very good job, finally, that's paying me very well. I don't want to lose this job. And I don't think it's fair that it's for something that's that long ago. And when I was in drug court, they would tell us that, you know, our felonies aren't going to, like, hold us back for the rest of our lives, and here it is. And I just really don't want to lose this job, so if it's, the ordinance says, guideline one here, he says that any person who has been convicted of a felony that is substantially related to the circumstances of the license activity does not qualify for an operator's license. These aren't substantially related. They have nothing to do with alcohol. I don't understand. I just don't understand that that even fits in the guideline.
So substantially related, may I ask what it is for?
It's for bartending.
The operator's licenses for bartending?
Yes.
I think they are related when there's, when there's credit card fraud, and, I mean, if, if you're taking people's cards.
But that's not for the license, the license is for the sale of alcohol. It's not having to do with whether you decide whether I get a job or not. It's the owner's discretion for that. That has nothing to do with the sale of alcohol. This would, alcohol-related crimes are serving to minors, serving after hours, an OWI even, which is stretching it, I think, but stuff like that. This has nothing to do with alcohol, nothing.
Do you recommend denial?
Law enforcement would recommend a denial based on the history.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Mason? Anything else you'd like to share, Ms. Mason?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you. All right.
If I may, President Van Rossum.
By all means.
It is important to remember that, you know, bartender doesn't need an operator's license to hold a job of tending bar. They just need to be supervised by a licensed operator.
I do hear. Because I can't work by myself, and that's when most of the hours are. So I'll lose my job.
All right. Anyone else?
Here's one quick question. How, what is the, what is the, I guess, decision-making process on what is or wasn't, what is not substantially related to bartending?
If you look at the entire circumstances of tending bar, it was spelled out correctly. You are taking driver's licenses, you are taking a personal identification, you are taking credit cards and credit card information, and that's very much related to the bartending circumstance. It's not just related to individual sales of alcohol, it's everything surrounding that.
I understand that. So a waitress would do the same, well, except for the ID. The only person who really checks for ID would be a bartender.
A waitress may too, depending on the situation.
Well, if, if they're serving alcohol, but I'm saying in a situation like Dunkin' Donuts, right, where you're not serving alcohol, you'll, you'll receive a credit card, but you're not checking ID.
Right, but then they don't need an operator's license.
I understand.
Operator's license is a privilege, and the village is completely responsible for issuing that or deciding not to issue that.
That was all going to what, how it becomes substantially related?
If you'd like to come back up, could you please come and share in the microphone and provide your name and address, because this is recorded. I know, but we need to know who's speaking, who just came forward again.
Cara Mason, 1130 Shepherd's Path, Green Bay, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
I did speak with Madison, and they were saying that this is a, they didn't agree with it either. They told me to get an attorney if I needed to, if I still got denied after seeing, after being at the board. So they don't agree with it either, they don't think it's substantially related. And an operator's license, the class that we take teaches us how to spot fake IDs and how to monitor someone's alcohol intake. It doesn't say anything about whether or not I'm able to take credit cards or if I'm going to steal their credit card information. It has nothing to do with that. The operator's license is for those two things.
Okay.
That's, I think it's at the discretion of the owner whether or not my felonies related to credit card fraud and my addiction have to do with my employment. I don't think it's at the level of the village. I just don't, I don't think that's fair.
May I ask you another question for you, though? So it looks like in 2007, there was a forgery and uttering. What, can I ask what you did?
That means that I forged my name as somebody else.
Okay.
And that was all related to my addiction. All of those felonies were around the same time, and they made every time that I did it, like, signed, you know, each thing was a felony, so.
What happened in 2012, then?
2012, I had a narcotics charge where I OD'd, and the ambulance came and the police came, and I was on heroin, I was a heroin addict, so.
It sounds like that was the end of it.
That was the end of it, yep. Yep. I did my probation, I did jail time, I did Brown County Drug Court, which was very difficult. And I successfully completed it in 13 months, which was very fast.
I mean, you're very determined, you've done, you've done a lot of it, no doubt about it.
That's.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, so, board, we can discuss this, or is there any questions for the deputy left? So I jumped out on this, and so I'll jump out on this one, too. I think it's, I think it's fairly consistent with the first. However, there is the issue of when we look at the offensive of felony offense being a lifetime, right? So that, that would be the issue that I would question on this. You know, is that appropriate? You know, we don't have to do what Madison does, we don't have to, we can do whatever we want with this, and it is our responsibility as a village. Certainly not judging you by your recovery or your ability to recover, but it's our responsibility when it comes to operator's license. So in this circumstance, again, I go back to what I said, we can't make a decision based on one individual, but we can correct an ordinance so that it's right for all, or guidance so that it's right for all individuals. So, you know, in this case, I would be an advocate to have this reviewed and, and look at some language that perhaps was a little bit different, rather than a lifetime offense, putting some, a lifetime restriction on it, putting some sort of timeline on it. And something, some discussion. I would be open to having some discussion on this. But again, I'm just one person.
You can't put one timeline on one person, everybody's going to be different. I don't, I don't know that that would be. It just, my concern is handling of money.
So I think that as a society, we do have to realize that people do change, that they become healthy, that they get their lives in order, right? I don't think there's a person in this room that hasn't done something stupid in their life. And sometimes that, that action has long-term consequences. Trying heroin the first time, right? If any one of us would have tried heroin, then we may be in that particular spot. So I, I am an advocate of looking over these guidelines and talking about at some point, doing kind of a guideline on what sort of crime will create this issue, and then what does come from a person who's tried to get their lives in order. And some crimes, obviously, I would probably put a very, very long timeline on. But other ones, I would probably go shorter.
Funny you say that, because I'm just looking at the guidelines. If I'm mistaken, it's 10 years, you go back 10 years, right?
Not a felony.
Felony's lifetime?
Felony's lifetime.
If these were just Mr. Miners, it'd be 10 years. Yes?
It would vary, between five and 10 years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm two, two, five, or 10?
Yes.
So the fact that they're felonies, that they go longer, but if they were just Mr. Miners, today would have been 10 years.
Correct.
For me, as much as I appreciate reviewing our ordinance, I think a lot of what we're up here for is to be that judgment call, to look at that ordinance. If, many of these times when these ordinances come before us, you see it in planning zoning, you see it other places, then I don't know that we would need, even need to be involved in this decision. We could just take whatever Officer Pasani says, and that's what we go with. The reason that we're here is to. make that decision, to look at that and maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't fit our guidelines, but once you take all the information and you may overrule what is before you. In the previous case and understanding what the person was doing, I felt comfortable with overruling what was before us. In this case, I do not. And I think that's what we're still responsible to do in this position. Is to look at what's before us. And now we decide whether we feel that meets that description or not. Not strictly by the letter of law, because it might be a little gray and that's what we're here for is to look at the gray and determine what the best course of action is.
Trusty Ward, if I may ask. So you have someone here that by our policy says goes back a lifetime. But they've done 10 years of getting in trouble. And when you look at the previous one, it was a little less than a year? Just over a year. So when I look at it, I'm looking at, well, 10 years of model behavior versus just over a year. And when I look at how we apply things, that, I think that's one of the reasons why we shouldn't have them up here. And to say yea or nay is because if we're looking at someone who's had 10 years of model behavior, even though that they are felonies, that's a consideration that we need to look at. Whereas someone else, they need maybe a little bit more time before we can, you know, override it or.
And I agree. We're not, we're not all going to agree on it and that's it. We're all interpreting it in our own way and then ultimately coming up with a final decision by vote. I went more with the severity of what was done. Someone may not have done something, I mean, not in this case, but someone may have done something, the felony might have been a much greater crime. And then do we go, well, they've been good now for 15 years? But the other person in this case to me, I think, made one stupid decision and kept compounding that same stupid decision over and over and over again. I, and I felt that was, in my opinion, felt that was less, less severe. So that's why I was comfortable with that one. With this one, I'm not. But I think that cumulative total of the board looking at it is what overrides that gray. This might fall in between.
And I think there has to be a point when we recognize as a society, as a group of people, that someone has rehabilitated.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Yep. I wasn't arguing with you, just that was my point.
Motion to accept the denial recommendation for Kara Mason for operator's license.
Second.
I have a motion to accept the denial, to accept the denial recommendation for Kara Mason, put out by Trustee Eckert and seconded by Trustee Ward. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to two.
Four to two.
I would like to put something back to staff on this ordinance though. I would like to have this ordinance reviewed. And I would like it to go if deputy, our good deputy sheriffs could please go out and look at what Madison has on the books now and maybe some other communities, because I think that having an infinite timeline on, on the felonies, I, I just, I think that that does not allow for rehabilitation. That's putting a permanent around, do, do we need a motion to do this or can I just refer this back to staff?
It's fine.
Thank you.
I, I would add more of a local area as well, because if we understand correctly, if Deputy is okay with it and other areas that are close, look at, at least look at what's around us too, to get a, a fair apples to apples.
Sure. And I think one more thing that would be helpful, if possible, is substantially related, it becomes a subjective thing.
It's very much so.
And it's very difficult for many, for any person in anyone's shoes to decide what that is. I realize that having a list of all the possible offenses would be ridiculous. But maybe look at some of the ones in this and maybe look at how or whether they are actually applicable in this case.
Okay.
Clear.
Sure.
Is that enough guidance? Anyone else have anything else they'd like to contribute on this? Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number, item B, 7B, discussion on guidelines for speed limit reduction requests. D E O Pisani. This has just been, you're going to make, you're going to make.
It's my night?
Yeah.
It's your day.
Thank you, please.
So, a request was made, last meeting, to present a little bit of background and some explanation on the process and criteria that we use to determine if a speed limit should be changed in the village. So before you, you have a couple of different documents, four documents. I'll go through each one of those and they kind of lead up towards, lead up to the end result, I guess you can say. So the first document is the federal statute, which indicates the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I'll refer to that from now on as the federal manual. Is the national standard for all traffic control devices installed. And states are also encouraged to adopt the national manual as their official manual. So that's basically the gist of the federal statute. Any questions on that one or we can kind of move on to the next? The next document is the Wisconsin manual on uniform traffic control devices. Not the manual in its entirety. That manual is over 860 some pages. So there's just a very small section of it. So this document is interesting because the state of Wisconsin did decide to adopt the full federal manual, which is in black text. And the red text is information specific to Wisconsin. So you can see on document two, paragraph three, notes Wisconsin State Statute 84.02 sub 4E. Says the department, which is the Department of Transportation, shall adopt a manual establishing a uniform system of traffic control devices for use on the highways of the state. The system shall be consistent with and so far as practicable, practicable, conform to the current nationally recognized standards for traffic control devices. Basically, that says Wisconsin adopted this manual and this is what Wisconsin is going to use. Paragraph five in the red text goes on to state, Wisconsin statute 349.065. State's local authorities shall place and maintain traffic control devices upon highways under their jurisdiction to regulate, warn, guide, and inform traffic. The design, installation, and operation or use of new traffic control devices placed and maintained after the adoption of the new uniform traffic control devices manual under the state statute listed above, shall conform to the manual. And after January 1st, '77, all traffic control devices placed and maintained by local authorities shall conform to the manual. So what does that manual say? The second page of that document contains both black text and red text. Again, the black text is the federal manual, straight from the federal manual. The red text is specific to Wisconsin. So the black text, section 2B, point 13 relates to speed limit signing. And the standard, the federal standard in black text again, says speed zones other than the statutory speed limits shall only be established on a basis of an engineering study that has been performed in accordance with traffic engineering practices. The engineering study shall include an analysis of the current speed distribution of free-flowing vehicles. The state of Wisconsin expands on that in the red text. And note, speed zones should be determined according to the department's Traffic and Engineering Operations and Safety Manual, chapter 13, section 5, sub 1, and the Wisconsin statewide speed management guidelines. Both of those documents are also included in, in portions of it, not the entire, entire document. So black to the, back to the black text from the federal manual. When a speed limit within a speed zone is posted, it should be within five miles per hour of the 85th percentile speed of free-flowing traffic. It's right from the federal manual. It does give other options to consider, such as road characteristics, shoulder condition, grade, alignment, sight distance, the pace, roadside development and the environment, parking practices and pedestrian activity, and reported crash experience for at least a 12-month period. That's all from the federal manual as well, that the state of Wisconsin did adopt. So the third document is a portion of the Traffic Engineering Operations and Safety Manual that was referenced in the Wisconsin manual. So these are the documents that the state of Wisconsin says you should really look at and use these to determine if, determine the speed limits.
Who's the author of these documents?
This one is right from the Department of Transportation.
So the federal Department of Transportation, not the state?
This one is state.
Oh, thank you.
So the first paragraph talks about why we have speed limits. A portion of that I'll highlight about halfway down. The concept of establishing speed limits is based upon the nationally accepted principle that the majority of drivers are cautious, prudent, and drive at speeds that are reasonable and proper, regardless of the posted speed limit. That is reflected in state statute under 34657 sub 4, being drivers must operate at a reasonable and prudent speed. In other words, motorists are required to drive at a speed that allows them to stop safely. The statute governs the speed of all drivers regardless of any posted speed limits. So regardless of what the speed limit is, if the speed limit is 45, someone's driving 35 and they go and crash, roadway was slippery, there was rain, whatnot, they can be cited for operating an unreasonable, as an unreasonable and prudent speed, even though they were even below the posted speed limit. That document continues on and goes over a few definitions through the next page. And then the third page. Philosophy. Right there. So then it kind of gets into the philosophy of establishing speed limits. And it notes the 85th percentile speed has been found to best represent the perceived reasonable speed. The Wisconsin manual, again, under 2B13 states when a speed limit is to be posted, it should be within five miles per hour of the 85th percentile speed of free-flowing traffic. This practice promotes safety as research shows lowest risk of being involved in a crash occurs at approximately the 85th percentile speed. Additionally, this practice promotes voluntary speed limit compliance as the majority of drivers would likely observe the speed limit. Third benefit of posting speed limits close to the 85th percentile speed is that the ability, is the ability to target law enforcement efforts toward the limited number of motorists at speed. Unreasonably low speed limits are also called irrational speed limits. They are not effective in changing driver behavior and have actually several negative, negative effects. Research shows that drivers do not reduce their speed to the posted limits based on the, based on the basis of signage alone. While irrational speed limits do not result in desired driver behavior, resulting negative, negative effects include higher financial costs due to the need for increased law enforcement, higher potential for crashes due to larger variability in vehicle speeds, and encouragement of motorists to disregard of other irrational posted speed limits. Irrationally low speed limits also promote a false sense of security among residents and pedestrians who may expect that posting lower speed limits would actually change drivers' behavior. Speed studies down. Goes over a little bit of the authority. You guys do have the authority to change local speed limits as long as they stay within statutory regulations. I think there's a chart later on that we can go through if need be. And it gets into the actual speed studies, what is included in a speed study. And speed studies shall measure the prevailing speed characteristics, including the calculation of the 85th percentile speed. Shall evaluate, I'm sorry. Shall contain the evaluation of reported crash experience for the past five years. I actually go back 10 years, make sure to get a full picture of it. Contains the assessment of the roadway's geometrics, including lane widths, curves, roadside hazards, and sight distances. Has the 10 mile per hour pace, the average speed, and the evaluation of density roadside and roadside development, i.e. the number of driveways and access points. The study should also include consideration of conflicts with parking practices and pedestrian bicycle, bicycle activity. It's not just a mere presence, but a significant presence. Kind of the example that I give for significant pedestrian activity is in front of the zoo. Speed limit on I, county IR is 45 miles per hour. Speed limit drops down to 25 miles per hour in front of the zoo. That's due in part to the severe increase in pedestrian activity of two marked crosswalks there. Are used year-round. It's not at a specific time of day, like before or after school. It's all day long. That is a significant amount of pedestrian activity. Could also think of Door County in cherry picking season. That high volume of pedestrian traffic. So then it goes to the objective, what, excuse me, what are the objectives of a modified speed limit? For a speed limit to be effective, it should reduce the speed differential of vehicles using the highway. The speed differential, not this high speed. It should be a reasonable speed so the majority of drivers will comply voluntarily. And it should reflect consistent application of traffic engineering principles and guidelines in common circumstances. So you don't skew off on one road when past practice and, and engineering studies and everything point to one speed limit here, you have a similar circumstance over here and you get a completely different result. And again, numerous studies have shown that setting a speed limit within five miles per hour of the 85th percentile speed is advisable to achieve safer operation. It's a common theme. You're going to see it over and over again. And it goes into assessing the need for speed zone modification. That next document actually explains this a lot better, so we'll skip over that. That portion here. Excuse me. So the next document is the Wisconsin statewide speed management guidelines. Also from the Department of Transit, Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Also referenced in Wisconsin's manual.
So this is a portion, so.
Portion of it.
We have chapter 13, Traffic Engineering Operations and Safety Manual, so this is another piece of that Traffic Engineering Operations Safety Manual.
This is a separate document.
This is a separate document?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's the second document that was recommended or, excuse me. It's the second document that Wisconsin says you should use to determine speeds. In Wisconsin's manual.
So we have federal guidelines and then we have two manuals from the state of Wisconsin that indicate what we should be using for setting speeds?
Sort of. You have the federal manual and then you have Wisconsin's.
Which is a copy of the federal manual.
Yep, yeah. And that manual says you should use these two documents to determine speed limits.
Okay, thank you.
Again, gives an introduction of speed limits, a little bit of a background on speed limits. One section in here on the background on speed limits is when the speed differential is high. Again, when the speed differential is high, so when you have a class of vehicles going slow and a class of vehicles going high, going faster, it's more likely that crashes will be more severe, cause more property damage and result in more injuries. The chart here is important. We're not outside the guidelines of, of state statutes, so we don't really have to worry about this. But this chart shows what you can do with certain posted speed limits, how high you can raise them and how much you can lower them. We're well within those bounds, so that's not something that we need to go through, at least at this point. So the next section is assessing the need for speed zone modifications. They have six steps, basically. Identify and inform the stakeholders, which are basically the Villaswamiko, law enforcement, public works. And we're all intimately involved in, in this discussion from the beginning. Collect location-specific data, which is done with that speed study. Analyze the data and develop study conclusions, which is done at the health and safety level. Along with developing the speed zone recommendation. Report draft results, conclusions, and recommendations. Kind of comes to you guys and then seek stakeholder support, which we're already involved in it as the villages, law enforcement, public works already. So we'll skip to step two then. Down to the meat and potatoes here. Collecting location-specific data. Down to the meat and potatoes here, uh, collecting location-specific data. It actually spells out what we need to collect, how we need to collect it. So it says we shall collect vehicle speeds, crash data, roadway geometrics, traffic control and posted speed limits, land uses, uh, functional classification and practical function of the roadways. So step three is to analyze the data, uh, develop, and develop study conclusions. And part of that, um, data that you shall analyze is the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed is the speed at or below which eighty-five percent of the observed traffic travels. The eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile speed has been found to represent the reasonable and proper speed perceived by motorists and is a key characteristic of traffic conforming to a safe and reasonable speed limit. While fifteen percent of the observed motorists travel above the perceived and reasonable and proper speed, studies have, again, shown this group of motorists causes many of the vehicle crashes along roadways. This is also a group at which law enforcement action is most effectively targeted. Studies have also indicated that the lowest risk of being involved in a crash occurs when motorists travel at approximately eighty-fifth percentile speed. Goes on to include the pace speed, the fiftieth percentile speed, and the design of the roadway, design speed of the roadway if it's known. Next page talks about speed distribution and the proportion of vehicles exceeding the posted speed limit. That goes along again with the percentile speeds. Another portion is the significance of secondary roadway, roadway attributes. That's where the pedestrian volume comes into play. The mere presence of pedestrians is not a significant factor, but a high volume of pedestrian traffic or a high volume of, um, bicycle traffic, a high, uh, volume of vehicles parked on the side of the road should be taken into consideration. And then crash data analysis. Basically, if there are crashes, um, that indicates there's an issue, whether it's speed, whether it's, um, roadway condition, uh, whether it's site distances, something's going wrong. Basically, if we don't have that crash data, there really isn't a problem because motorists are going through. So step four, develop, develop speed zone recommendations. Uh, so again, for a change in speed limit to be effective, it should accomplish the following. Should be able to reduce the speed differential vehicles using the highway. Be a reasonable speed so the majority of drivers comply, again, voluntarily. Um, should reflect consistent application of traffic engineering principles and guidelines. And decisions regarding potential change in speed limit should be based on objective findings, not find, objective findings of the speed study and on conditions that exist at the time of the evaluation. Modified speed limits should not be installed to address the response to noise complaints, the accommodation of specialty vehicles, future growth anticipated in the area, anticipated law enforcement of the roadway, future concerns that have not previously occurred, or to correct spot safety or operational problems. And it goes on to how you report, uh, your draft results, conclusions, and again, seeking that stakeholder support, which we're already involved in. So this spells out how to perform a speed study. The information that's required in the speed study. I mean, it's pretty straightforward in, in my eyes. This is right from state statute.
It is a tremendous amount to consume.
It is a lot.
Um, you, you, it, it took me multiple readings to go through it and put the pieces together, but I, I applaud you. When Administrator Caper said we couldn't have it on two weeks ago, he said Deputy Pizani was working on it. And I said, well, then I guess we're gonna have to expect something really special. Um, it's very comprehensive. I'll say that, you know, very detailed. So, the comments from the board.
Yeah, I think it's a great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize for the frog in my throat.
Oh, I've, I've got stories on that.
Right.
Especially eating a sub in the middle of a meeting is the worst sometimes.
I usually don't do the echo chamber and say the same thing others are saying, but I do appreciate it because it gave me a much better understanding of where that eighty percentile comes. I think sometimes we discount it and to see really how much goes into it. I appreciate it.
Even another question. So how long, how long have this, how long have we had this, this guidance in place in the village of Swamaco?
Uh, I don't have the exact answer for that. I do know that there was a rewrite of village code back in the early nineties. Where each of the, the roads were gone through and, and fixed, basically, to, to conform to this. So best, best guess would be early nineties.
About a part of thirty years.
Right.
So I'm gonna continue with what I had stated earlier, maybe to your chagrin, maybe not so much, but this plays into that theme again of this evening. So again, we have guidance here, which, which I agree, until now, it wasn't clear to me. I mean, this is extensive and makes it much clearer to me. It's not just saying the eighty-fifth percentile, that we do it because we do it. It gives me the details behind it, which I needed, and I appreciate that. But this is guidance that's been in place for a very, very long time with regard to speed limits. And, you know, here, I counted when I was doing this, there, there's no fewer than ten elements to this guidance, right? A federal manual, state manual, traffic engineering, Wisconsin DOT, eighty-fifth percentile, crash data, roadway geometrics, um, site distances, traffic count, Wisconsin statewide management guide. There's a lot going on here, right, that supports this. And I am not opposed to, to, you know, this board making decisions, as I wasn't in the earlier discussion, hence the theme. If this is something that we feel we need to change, this guidance, then let's do it the right way. And the right way is, let's find the guidance that we want, let's address this, let's discuss it, and let's make the changes to the guidance. We have that authority. We can do that. But if we arbitrarily, arbitrarily, for whoever decides that they want a different speed limit on their street, you know, if we start doing that and we don't follow these ten elements of guidance, how are we being fair to the person who comes in the door? And not fair, and, and unfair to the next person or the other person who uses the street? You, we, we, we live in a society, in a community, and we have laws and we have guidelines that keep us all together and from, from strangling each other, right? This is part of that. And, and again, I'm not opposed. If, if, if the majority of the board feels that this is an error, that this is too draconian, and quite honestly, I feel like the opposite is true. If we start making judgments on individual speed limits, then aren't we imposing, you know, the board's view and additional governance? I mean, and that's something nobody wants, is additional governance on a particular area. This, we have guidance. So again, I'll leave it at this. If the board is so inclined and would like to discuss this, I, I will second the motion to bring this out and discuss this and reset, reset this guideline. But I won't be for changing speed limits, you know, going forward. That if the guidance, if the guidance and the guidelines and the data show that we need to change those speed limits, I'm a hundred percent in. If they don't show that and we go through this guidance and whatever reason it's, it's for, I'm not gonna support that. I, I can't support that. I think it's the wrong thing to do for the village of Swamaco. I think it's the wrong, it, it's, it's not the way, it's not what I was elected to do.
I think you kind of hit it on the head when you said that you weren't aware of how in-depth and comprehensive it is. Because I don't think any of us really were. And it's been in, on the books for thirty years. I think it's one of those, it, it's nice to be reminded of what's gone into our ordinances and why we have this. Like you said, it's a very large eight-hundred-page manual.
I think it's eight-hundred-and-sixty-six.
Late, light reading for you at night?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, there, there are experts far smarter than I that went into that. And I agree with you. I think this, with the, all the elements that are going in there, they did for a reason. It's just not an arbitrary, oh, just pick eighty-five percent. And I think because we weren't aware of it, we weren't, yeah, we weren't aware of it, of the depth that it went into. And we should really, okay, this, this is why it's done and we should probably, the state's following it. That's probably why we should follow along.
Others?
I have a question. So the eighty-fifth percentile is based on the, a term that repeats many times in this document. That term is free-flowing traffic. How, I don't see a definition of free-flowing traffic in this, and I'm curious, uh, how is that normally determined? Is that an unposted area where people just drive, or is that a posted area where people react to?
So if you think about free, free-flowing traffic, when you're driving and there are no other vehicles around, you, you can drive the speed that you feel is appropriate, that you're comfortable with. If there's a vehicle in front of you, your speed is gonna be restricted by that vehicle. So free-flowing traffic, um, it's basically a concept from, there are a lot of different, um, processes to, to gather speed data manually. Uh, you do that with a laser, with a radar. We do it with a, a device. We don't have to sit out there. So that gathers, um, data for two weeks, twenty-four hours a day. So it's an incredibly large sample size. Uh, sample sizes for, for speed studies that are required are a lot smaller. So when you're pinpointing those vehicles, what they want you to do is, is, uh, select the vehicle that's traveling by itself. We don't need to do that because our sample size is so big and, and that speed board is out there for such a long period of time. So some of the speed samples are a couple of hours, something like that. But ours are, are far greater.
Sure.
So, if, if that kind of helps.
Well, it, sort of does, but the, anytime you put any restriction on traffic, you're changing it to no longer, so, uh, should I say this? When I post a speed limit sign, in, even if I were to go to an irrationally low, right, which is another question I have is, how is that defined? Is that basically outside of that chart you gave? But we'll get to that in a bit. Once I post a speed limit sign, we're all taught, at the very beginning we learn how to drive, obey the speed limit, right? So most people, um, will go a little over the speed limit in general. And once that signs up, how do we now take that data as uncorrupted? Cause your, people are gonna be driving. I saw the confusion. So if, if the posted speed limit says fifty-five, and I see that sign, I say, okay, I'm gonna go about fifty-five. If that sign wasn't there, and if I didn't know that, uh, you know, state highway is fifty-five, interstate sixty-five, or say interstate seventy now, I guess, whatever. How do we actually get to free-flowing traffic? Because there is no actual free-flowing traffic in the sense that all, all traffic is restricted by a sign.
By restricting, uh, they're restricting, restricted by another vehicle.
I understand.
The initial posting of a speed limit is done with an engineering study, um, done by traffic engineers. That's not me. Uh, so that's where that initial posted speed limit comes in, outside of the statutory limits. So regardless of, of any posted speed, or absent any posted speed limit, you do have those statutory limits that, on this type of road, this is what the limit is. If it's not posted, it's fifty-five. That's the speed limit. Not posted. To post the speed limit, that initial engineering study has to be performed, and that's, again, done by the traffic engineers. I'm not an expert in that. I can't speak for that. Uh, there's a lot that goes into it, just like with even these speed studies. I understand, uh, the speed studies, not the engineering side of it. So where those actual numbers come in, into play, I know there's angles of the road and they're actually taking measurements and, you'd be a little more adept in that. Right.
Oh, yeah. That's really not what I'm asking, though. I, what I'm, uh, I'm trying to get down to the validity of the eighty-fifth percentile, so.
And that's a, that's an engineering thing that's already been accepted nationally? And I can't argue, um, you know, I don't have the, I don't have the intelligence to argue the eighty-fifth percentile. It's nationally accepted and, and required by the state. That's, that's what I go by.
So let me say it this way. So when we look at a speed limit in an area, uh, say the road was a hundred miles an hour, right? Uh, what would the eighty-fifth percentile speed be in a hundred mile an hour road?
I don't know. That would depend on each individual driver driving that. That would depend on the roadway itself. You know, there, there are a lot of factors that would go into, um, what someone is comfortable driving.
I think I understand why I'm not asking a good, I'm not asking an accurate question. So the, the last time we talked about a speed limit, you presented a report. We were talking, I think, about Pine, which was looking at forty-five to thirty-five. You report on that, stated a speed limit, the average speed people went. Do you remember what that number was?
Not off the top of my head. I don't have that.
The eighty-fifth percentile was around fifty-one.
Okay, so the, the posted speed limit is eighty-five percent of the actual speed people are going. On average.
No.
No, okay.
The eighty-fifth percentile is, oh, we can go right back to the-
Isn't it the speed that eighty-five percent of the drivers that are going through there?
At or below, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so if you post a speed limit, though, don't you create a, you, you create, um, I guess a formula for that data to be corrupted? Because once you've posted a speed limit, you're creating an environment where people are gonna go about that speed limit.
Well, and as part of that, and initial engineering study, before there was a speed limit posted, they determined what the eighty-fifth percentile speed was, absent that posted speed limit. That was part of that engineering study, that initial engineering study.
So before we posted speed limit, before any of these posted speed limits were showing up on roads, there was a study that showed free-flowing traffic without speed limits and people?
I can assume.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not intimately-
I understand.
Yeah.
That's, that's-
That's getting into a traffic engineering realm.
I think it goes into the other pieces, though. So they're gonna look at a road before they post a speed limit. I mean, there, there's, what, what's the rule on a, on a street, on a road where there is no posted steep, speed limit? What's the speed limit?
Fifty-five.
Okay. So everybody starts out at fifty-five miles an hour, but then you look at these roads and you look at the geometrics of the road. You look at, you know, is there crash data on that particular road, all of this, then the, if, if I'm understanding the process right, because that's a piece that I didn't understand before. There is a process behind this. Those engineers are going through and saying, eh, you know, this road, it's not appropriate for fifty-five. We're gonna make it forty-five. And then that's the assumption that eighty-five percent of the population that's driving down that road is gonna be doing forty-five miles over, five miles under at forty-five miles an hour, right?
Sounds about right.
Close. Forty-five, so eighty-five percent of the people will drive at forty-five or below.
Right. So.
So eighty-five percent of the people would adhere to this speed limit?
So I think, I think to your point, Trustee Romus, I think to your point, you know, what, what really is in question is how good are the traffic engineers who set that initial speed limit?
And what's changed?
Well, traffic flow, right?
Right? So like, take for instance Pine, we'll just use that because that was the last one we talked about. When that initial speed limit was set, how many years ago was that done? And what did Pine look like that many years ago? And I, I think, you know, you talked about the idea of, should we look at this? And I, I think, uh, you know, the data is there, but I don't think we should be, I don't think we as a group should be held by the, the data in reports specifically. If we have a group of residents in that area that come in and say, guys, this is kind of getting scary around here. I think we have a duty to listen.
I think we definitely have a duty to listen, no doubt about that. I, I would ask, though, you know, rather than a petition coming forward, where's the data that shows that? What have, you know, what is our traffic count now compared to ten years ago? How long has that speed limit been in place? What's our crash data on that? You know, what's the population in that area? All of these questions, you know, and that gets into those, those ten elements.
I completely agree. It's, it's not just one thing. It's not like, hey, a petition came forward, everyone wants to do it. Oh, let's go. No, it's part of the bigger picture question, but I don't think we should just look at only the data. If we have residents in an area that are observing something on a daily basis, I don't think we're wise to ignore that.
I don't think we ignore it, but I think we have a process that we can put it through, though. Would you agree that we would?
That would be fine.
We certainly, if somebody raises an issue, raises a concern, we don't have to take the eighty-fifth percentile and say that's the rule. But we have a process to put it through, and then we look at the, once it goes into the, the blender, you know, what comes out? What do we have?
Yeah.
Is there any recommendation? Does anybody have anything they would like from staff? You gave it to me now.
I think the process that we are using with all the guidelines and for speed limit changes and along with over eight-hundred pages, and, you know, we don't even have all of that. But there's, there's a lot, lot that goes into it. And I, I agree with, um, the recommendation. And, and I see no reason for changes on the guidelines. And, and I see no reason for changes on the guidelines, you know, that's put before either.
Other comments from the board? Questions? No?
No.
Okay. My appreciation, I think everybody appreciated deputy Pizani's good, good work on this. I think you made a lot, for me, you made a lot of things, a lot of things more clear, and I think maybe for others as well. And I'm sure that we'll continue to have this discussion and listen to anybody who wants to come in, and we'll be a lot more educated next time. Okay, moving on, so we are on item number eight, which is Public Works items. The first item is item A, Harbor Lights Road Design and Funding. And this would go to director Smits, and just one comment on this. I just want to make it clear, I said it earlier in the beginning of this meeting, and I'll say it again. This was an issue that I saw came up, and it was voted down by Public Works four to two. However, I thought it was important that we bring this forward to the board for the reason, and this again plays into this evening's theme. This particular item was part of our comprehensive plan, and has been part of our comprehensive plan. And as part of our comprehensive plan, it is the board who made that decision on the comprehensive plan. And I'm not saying everybody appreciated or voted for every item, but the board representing the citizens of Swamaco and the citizens of Swamaco came together and made those decisions on that comprehensive plan, and this is a piece of it. So I felt it was important that, because it was a piece of the comprehensive plan, that we bring it forward to the board. And again, on this evening's theme, we make a decision. Does this work in our comprehensive plan, or doesn't it?
The comprehensive plan does not say that it has to be done this way or by that funding.
No, but it wouldn't have come to the board at all if we would have followed and, and not brought it up at all. It needs to come forward because it is part of the comprehensive plan, and we could decide how to do it from there. I'm not saying that, I'm not an advocate or against it. I think there's some questions that we have to address with regard to funding.
There's some major questions.
Major questions. But I think it should have come to the board because it was part of the comprehensive plan. That's my view.
I don't, I'm new here, but I look at it as, committee is set up of people that are unelected. And any decision by the committee should be something the board can review. Because we're elected.
So, so let's get into it, unless there's other comments.
All right, thank you. All right, last March, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed. And as part of that, the BIL funding was allocated to all the states. And the BIL stands for Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Bill. And through that bill, there was $3.8 million, you know, be, are given to the Brown County MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So through the state, there was so much money given, and then from the state, it was divvied up to the counties based on population density and size and area served. So Brown County was getting about $3.8 million. So we knew there was the potential for federal funding for an improvement here in the village on one of our streets. We put together a roadway that fit the comprehensive plan and the bike and trail plan. Any improvement would be, need to be WISDA, or brought up to WISDA standards. So with that, you have to build your pedestrian accommodations, and you have to follow your most stringent plan that your community has approved. So that's where the comprehensive plan and bike and trail plan come into effect. So we picked a collector here in the village that's inside the MPO. So there's a map that identifies what area of your village is, lies with inside that MPO. And only a small portion of Swamaco actually is in the MPO. So that's where we narrowed it down to Harbor Lights Road. It seemed to make sense with the ADT on the roadway. It connected a school to a park and a county, two county roads that have bicycle accommodations already. So we saw a lot of benefit if this were to move forward. We selected for the road, we filled out the application, did all the supporting documents that I did attach. We put together some line work. And this is not a final design that's been decided on by us, by anybody. It's just something we threw together in a very short order because we only had so much time to apply for this without spending a lot of staff time on it. But we put something there that made sense, and accommodated both a multi, multimodal system and/or bike and trail accommodations. So multimodal is one side, minimum of 10 feet wide, or compensates for that. Or you can do off-street sidewalk with on-street bicycle lanes. So we kind of split it up here, knowing we have a more narrow right-of-way than your standard build for something like this. We wanted something that fit without having to purchase a whole bunch of right-of-way or expand it where it just didn't seem to fit. So we snuck it in there and, and kind of used, blended both the 10-foot trail and the 6-foot sidewalk. We submitted it to the MPO, they reviewed it, and unfortunately, they did not, this project did not get funding through the BIL. So the question that I brought to the committee was to leave it in the MPO for future funding. So there is the STPG, which is the Surface Transportation Block Grant. Every few years, the funding cycle gets more money from the federal government again. So the question that we kind of are at now is, do we leave it in there for future funding? All federal funding, you know, all federal monies that we, that we'd use for this? Or do we pull it out of there? So there's no requirements at this time, other than to leave it in there. You know, they want to know, the MPO wants to definitely know if you leave your project in there. It scores additional points year, the more years that it's in there. So if we didn't, weren't interested, you know, I would certainly pull it out right away. But the more years it's in there, the better it scores. They did score the projects that are currently in the MPO, and that's on the very last attachment. So we came in, I think, fifth for this funding cycle, which I think means the project scored pretty well. Only a few others moved ahead of ours. So I think at some point, if the village were to pursue federal funding, we would probably get it. I don't know when that would be, whether that's 10 years, 15 years, five years, I really have no idea. It all depends on how much money comes from the federal government. Other than that, we took it to the committee to review, and it was not supported. It was a four to two vote on their decision, and I think it basically came down to funding. I mean, 1.25, or 1.25 would be our responsible part, and that's a lot of money. That's our whole road project and some, if you look at it from that standpoint. So I think, you know, from their standpoint at the committee level, it was just, you know, that's a lot of money to stick towards one particular roadway. It doesn't have benefit there, yes, but, you know, we still have 140 miles of other roads that we need to take care of in this village as well. And we can't, can't, you know, just throw all of our money for a year plus at, at one particular street. So we, that's where we are at the staff level. We just need to know your support or not support on keeping it in that program.
Okay, this is government waste at its finest. This is a road of houses. We would actually have to pay more if we get the grant than if we were just going to redo the road. We would pay more by accepting the grant. Even just the sheer amount of, it's not, I, I live here. I'm, I'm one of the houses. And my neighbors aren't thrilled about it either. Just how much would it even cost for the right-of-way? I know you didn't do a detailed measurements because you were getting it ready. You didn't do any details. This is not going to fit. The amount of right-of-way we would have to buy, you'd be, you'd be eating up everybody's front yard with it. You'd be doing this to DOT standards. You'd be making my residential road a highway. It's a busy road, but it's not a highway. And it, it just, it's waste. We, do I want it fixed? Yeah, it's not real good. But it doesn't have to be done this way, and it doesn't have to cost this much. And it just, I, I can't even, this, this ticks me off.
So there, there were three driving factors I remembered from that meeting. That's one of them. So how long of a stretch is, is this again?
I think it's like 4,800 feet.
From belt all the way across.
Well, that might have the exact.
And then to, to do that road to the village standards and increase with a little bit for whatever biking pedestrian? What, how much would we have spent to do that? If we just did it to village standards? Because this is looking for a higher level.
Yeah, I think it would have been about, to replace it as is, I think it would have been like around 500.
To replace it as it is?
Replace it as it is, yeah.
Which we have to do. When is it on the books to be replaced?
It's not even, so Harbor Lights Road still is scores of five on our Pacer rating. So it's not even on our five-year capital.
See, that was done, at least towards the school, was done somewhat recently, right? Like last decade?
Um, I think it was probably more like 15 years ago. Harbor Lights was widened there in front of the school because they expanded to add a turn lane, or two turn lanes and one parking lane in front of the school.
And we had your predecessor rerouting heavy traffic over my road, even though it's not a truck road, which probably wore it out a little sooner. But it, it's, it's not a good road, and yeah, of course, I'd like to see it be redone. But we don't need federal funding to do it. That's just government waste. If you want to stick with your trails plan, you could theoretically do a shoulder, which hasn't even been talked about in Public Works. That would still stick with your comprehensive plan. We don't have to go federal funding for it.
So I think we maybe did talk a little bit about that, the different options, and whether it was a village-style road. And is, if I remember correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I remember correctly, we would be spending more money to do it this way, out of our pockets than if, if, for any of those other options.
More than double.
We, if we were to replace the road with this design where we actually had an off-street walkway or sidewalk plus a on-street bike path, we still figured it up to be around a million dollars.
So we're still paying 250?
If we did it on our own.
Well, I'll say this too, so maybe. Because there, there are other grant opportunities that you can stack. Like there's the Safe Walks to School grant funding out there. So the real question is the concept itself. Are you interested in that concept? If so, we can pursue grant funding. If we don't get the grant funding, you don't do it. But if you get the grant funding, would you be interested in doing this concept? That's the real question.
No.
Well, I know that's your, I know that's your response. I'm just saying in general for the board, that's what's up for discussion.
And how are you going to fit that in there with small front yards and I?
Very preliminarily, without surveying out everybody's corner or property pins, that, that's why we picked that design, because it did fit in that right-of-way. The only, from a preliminary look at this, the only land to be purchased would be for our stormwater management, which are those two blue areas for stormwater ponds. And at this point, we just picked the only two lots that aren't developed or don't have houses, and that's where we showed them.
Did you contact those residents? Because?
Because, why, we didn't want to waste any more time on it than we didn't need to. We showed it on a plan to see if we qualified for the funding and to see where we stood with it. And then one of these, the land towards the tracks, I think, either our property or DNR property.
It's DNR property. It's small, tiny.
We have a sliver in that, that area too.
Yeah, we have, it's a portion of it.
That was the other item that, that with me at the committee is the fact that we'd have to use eminent domain or purchase that stuff. So the value, my personal opinion is that you did a great job, right? You tried to find a road that would fit in this small, narrow rules that this, this money could come in. You did a great job finding that. You did a great job presenting it. And we simply looked at it. You did your job. We kind of did ours in the committee. We looked at it and said, it's not the proper value for the villages, the Swamaco residents, and that's why we shot it.
So is that what came out of Public Works? It was, it was, it was a financial decision?
Well, there's several, yeah, there's several items, right?
Okay.
The eminent domain portion of it, just the reality of. Now, from another standpoint, you know, kind of to trustee Eckert's point, is federal grants have strings attached, and those strings aren't always necessarily easy to see. This particular one required us to find a sliver of roads and opportunities. It would have been much nicer had the federal government simply said, Village of Swamaco, you can have $3.8 million to use for your roads if you contribute 1.2 of your own money. That would have been much more appropriate. We wouldn't even be having this debate because we would use it on White Pine, we would use it on Live Bell. There's so many opportunities, but what they did, and call Gallagher, call Johnson, call Baldwin. Say, don't do that. If you're going to give us the opportunity to take our tax money and put it back into our roads around Bend, don't tie so many strings to things. That's all I've got to say about that.
Well, I favor, I favor that staff at least would continue to look into it. We don't have to accept any of these proposals if they don't make sense. But if we do come across one that does make sense, I mean, why not keep your options open?
It's still going to be DOT standards. It's going to be expensive.
It's a safe way to allow people to get to the school, Bay Harbor School, to get to Idlewild Park, to further and get to Barkhausen even. And it's, and it is part of what's in our trail comprehensive plan, trying to link these roads, you know, to try to make something that connects all the time. Right now, it doesn't.
You could link it with a shoulder. You wouldn't have to spend a fortune.
I'm saying keep our options open.
I, I, I agree with, in principle, but then again, there, there comes a, like, how much time are you going to spend on it? Because that's money too. I agree that this is way too much. Because even if you, you do the 1.2, and we've put in, you have in here by 2027, we have 1.36 in our roads. But that would essentially wipe out 12 years of planning for a little something. As far as like having sidewalks and stuff through the school, that's a elementary school. There's not too many kids riding their bikes or anything going that way. Do I think that we could have used the money elsewhere as trustee Romes? Absolutely. It's when you get narrowed into it that it becomes a quagmire. Keep your eyes open for something. If it was, as administrator Kaker said, that you can double or triple up and where our costs become little to nothing, great. I wouldn't spend all day trying to find it, though.
We can open it up in a second, like, make the comment. So a question, when our comprehensive plan, when we crafted that comprehensive plan, drafted that, was that 15, 2015?
Yeah, the last approval, I think there was an amendment in January of 2016.
Okay. So my point in bringing this forward was simply, again, and this is not to keep harping on it, but it plays into the theme of the evening, right? We made a commitment as a board, we made a commitment to the community in terms of a comprehensive plan. All of us signed up for it. Maybe not every bit of it, but all of us supported it. We put it out there. That's what we're supposed to be following. This was part of the comprehensive plan. I mean, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear when it comes forward that, you know, when we look at it from a financial standpoint, that this doesn't make sense. You know, to, to me, the biggest issue on it was, to, to me, we should always be looking for opportunities, but we should be smart enough to be able to look for those strings or say, you know, makes me a little nervous. I don't think we're going to do it. But we shouldn't be not look for those opportunities because we're afraid of those opportunities. Let's look at them, and then let's use our staff, and let's use our own intelligence to figure out if it makes sense. In this case, the, the big issue for me on it was, as I said, it was in the comprehensive plan and commitment we made to the community. Let's discuss it. When we look at it financially, my bigger concern was, and I'll echo what was said by you, Mr. Schneider, you know, we've worked so hard to build up that traffic fund or that, the roads fund. And to use it in, I, I, I see, I see that as being a fund that's going to be around and not just eliminated right away. Not that it would be in its entirety, but if you look at the five-year term, if this is 2027 that we're looking at this, and you just look at that five years, and you take just the bare minimum of inflationary increase over the next five years, 2% year over year, you're already at 1,380,000 by 27 in terms of the cost, taking what the cost is currently. Not that they wouldn't increase it, but that's just a, that's one of those hidden strings, right, that you got to think about. So I would, in this case, I would be more of an advocate of, of moving this out of this. I don't think that this is necessarily works, but I don't want it to dampen the spirit of looking for continuing opportunities and bringing them to the board and bringing them to Public Works so we can discuss this.
Because sometimes it's going to be no, and sometimes it will be yes.
And I think that was actually stated at the committee meeting too. You know, the, the amount of work that went into it was appreciated, you know? Yeah, it was absolutely open to the idea. I mean, there may be, you know, there may be an opportunity coming down the road. We should never.
Close it.
Two of the individuals in the Public Works Committee were actually board members at the time, and were very intimate in crafting that comprehensive plan as well. So I, I think we've done justice to discussing it. I, I don't know that it's the right thing to do right now. I think it's a great connector. I think it's a great connector. I mean, when you look at the school and the park that's right there, and there are a lot of kids who actually ride the bikes. I have to, I have to occasionally, you know, go to that school for a pickup and more and more all the time, right? So it's something to think about. We've got a, it's something to think about, this connectedness of our community. But I don't think this is the.
So the question before us is still, do we want staff to continue to keep their ears open and look for options? Or do nothing? Correct?
I would like them to look for options.
Well, let's, we're talking specifically Harbor Lights.
On this, on this particular Harbor Lights option.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would probably put this aside.
I'm not interested, Andy, I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you didn't put a significant amount of staff time into it. And I'm sure as you're aware, I believe I was on Planning and Zoning Board Directors for Brown County when we became eligible for MPO funding. And it just always seemed like communities dashing at a moving target that then they were thought for sure that was, you know, two thousand sixteen, they were gonna get this money. And oh, you know what? It's done for this year, it's now your move to two thousand eighteen and we're constantly chasing the money. I, I just never really appreciated the process. You know, if it's a sure thing and we have the money for whatever reason just sitting around, then I would be all for it. But I think we would just be doing the same thing, kinda chasing that, that money in, in two thousand twenty-seven and then hope it all lines up, which hate to be a pessimist, but unlikely to.
But I know, so, so.
Definitely keep looking for additional funding. I love that, you know, free money, yay, but there are a lot of strings attached. And from my experience, the MPO funding is not the greatest.
So if we're, if we're telling staff no at this time and let's say funding comes available in two thousand twenty-eight or two thousand twenty-nine, does that mean we told them no?
The circumstance could be completely different though. I mean, it's gonna depend what we have in our traffic fund and.
But yes, Andy, you could correct me if I'm wrong. Essentially, we're taking ourselves out of the list. The, the, the communities put themselves on that list, they put their project on there, they are set for that year, and then you have to have that money available for that target year you have. Am I correct?
Yep, there's a list of projects and any, any year, any community can submit a project to the MPO for this funding. And it just keeps getting all the metrics used, rank the projects. And you score more points by having four years in the MPO with your project. It's definitely be the only downfall by pulling it, is if, you know, you wanted to bank on those years. But if you have a good, or a good scoring project, you know, you'll, the years probably aren't enough to make up for that. If you have a great project and they all see that and it scores well, it'll score well that year you want to submit it for.
And I really appreciate us moving forward with the course of action we currently have. I think it's been working well, it's been very fiscally responsible. I, I think this would kinda be counter what we've been doing currently. I think we've been providing the funds, we've been responsible with it. If there's additional funds, I mean, we've got small amounts before, great, fantastic. Let's keep plugging ahead. But I don't, I think this is kinda sidetracking us from our, you know, current mission.
Hey, there was a, there was a request from the audience to speak. I would need a motion to open this up for.
Some.
Seconded.
So we have a motion on the floor by Trustee Schneider, seconded by Trustee Romus to open this up to public comments. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please provide your name and address and say what's on your mind. Yes, sir. You were waiting very patiently.
I just found out about this meeting. My name is Paul Schmidt, I live off Harbor Lights Road, eleven thirty Bay Miss Court. I take it she must live off between Jay and Longview when she says, you know, the yards are small.
Your side is, it's past it. I'm, I'm actually toward Velp. It's, it's right, I'm, one of my houses is, I mean, my house is in there.
Okay. I just, I guess I just ask that you don't totally close the idea. I know a lot of people that live on Lake Leon in the center circle or me on Harbor Lights Lake. We like to walk and that road is not safe. I know the people that live on Lake Leon that live on Harbor Lights Road would, I never asked them, but I know they don't like cutting the ditch anyway, so I don't know how you'd widen the road to begin with. And like she said too, the road probably deteriorated a little faster being as much construction.
This is across the highway from you though.
Yeah, this is, what we're discussing would only go from Velp to Lake.
It's Birch to Velp.
Velp to Jay?
It's not even on your, no.
Not even that far.
Oh.
It's not on your side.
Barely to this.
To Birch. So there's no?
No talk.
Discussion as far as anything going through the bay.
There wouldn't be any money left that year.
Okay.
No.
Well, I'm just here to find out, I mean, everybody complains that it's so unsafe to walk Harbor Lights Road when they try to walk around the lakes.
But we're the other side of the highway from you.
Yeah, but this is, this is valuable comments, I mean.
No, it is.
Putting it to the public record.
You know, I'm just here to find out, is there ever a chance that you guys would consider? I mean, there's a lot of revenue that comes out of that area and Harbor Lights Road is extremely thin, skinny.
We're constantly trying to address the whole trails issue, right? That's something that we struggle with. So, so trails cost money to maintain them, they cost money to put in. But we know we would like trails, it's part, it's a big piece of our comprehensive plan and we're trying to find ways to do it. This was one way to potentially, you know, put in an element of connective trail. It's just probably not the best idea at the moment for it. So there's constantly looking at that.
I know somewhere along the line on, on the village too, that I think you guys own some land down by the east end of the lake. Like there's a.
Mink Ranch Road.
Yeah.
Off of Mink Ranch Road.
Is, is there anything that's gonna be developed in there that you know?
I, I would discuss that, but it's not on the agenda, so unless this, this is just public comments.
So as of now, I, I understand that.
But if there's anything you ever wanna discuss like this, you can come in at the beginning of the meeting, we open it up for public discussion. So you could present these.